Talking about making commercial property, okay? I have 10 acres. My neighbor has 10 acres. The Reed property, 10 acres. Three sections right in line with each other. And I just, I cannot see making, and they call, they call this name. I would have never known this term before called spot zoning, before it was talked about in the last meeting that I was in, in here. And, you know, you got a bunch of residential property and properties that are planned to have houses on around us. I know Richburg is gonna fill up with houses down there eventually around the interstate and where I live, and I understand that. All I'm saying is, why would we put a piece, a little 10-acre tract and make it commercial and still have houses all around it? And be right beside, you know, my neighbor's property that they've lived there all my life, all the 46 years that I've been alive, they've lived there in that house and even before that. I just, I can't go along with making residential property commercial under those circumstances. Any questions or anything?
Thank you very much.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
A point that I meant to make. After that meeting that I was in here that night, unless, maybe a month ago, and it was voted down six to zero, one day passed and that orange sign out in front of this property was taken down. And it's just my opinion that if, if something's gonna be voted on by six people, six to zero, and then the sign taken down the next day, why wouldn't we leave that sign up for the next three readings of this as a reminder that it's not over yet? Because if I'd had any idea that it was gonna go the other way from what I thought when I left this place before, I'd have been back to make it clear that we don't want this. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Michael McClinton.
My name is Michael McClinton. I live at 620 Pine Ridge Road. I have two points that I'm not clear on as far out there where I live at. We wanna keep it a residential area, but in just in case it becomes a commercial area. Now, when you say commercial area, does it just contain to that 619? Do it, do all Pine Ridge from one end to the other become a commercial area? And the reason why I said that is because I have property beside my home, and what if a business person decides to purchase that property and put a building there and meet all y'all's coves? If it becomes a residential area there, what's gonna stop him from putting a building over there? And then more buildings go up around Pine Ridge. What we trying to do, we know we got one, but we don't want anymore. So if you make a commercial area and you start opening it up, you're gonna open up a Pandora's box. And if you do that, anybody can come in anytime and purchase land down there and put a building there. So that's what I, that's what I don't understand. If it's just gonna be there at 19, or it's gonna be Pine Ridge to the whole world. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we have Ms. Edna McClinton.
Yes, my name is Edna McClinton, and I live at 620 Pine Ridge Road, Chester. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Guy, Mr. Hester, and Ms. Mosley for last Monday. It was a very, very informative meeting, and we learned a lot. And we know that from that meeting, we know that there's a lot of things that we do not understand because it was so informative. We learnt great knowledge from it. So it's a lot of stuff about building and zoning that we don't understand. But with that being said, we're not uneducated, and we're not blind. So we still see what's going on over there. And as my husband says, is this only 619, or is this all of Pine Ridge? Because we have a big property beside ours that someone can come in and make. The third thing is, the second thing is, why can't he sell it like it is? Why can't he sell it as residential? We're not holding him from not selling it as it is. Why do we have to change it to commercial for him to sell it? And the third thing is, he's been very disrespectful to us. I can't show y'all this, but we just got a picture a minute ago. He's bought another camper there. There's a whole nother camper on that property. He's bought another camper there today. He's doing nothing to upkeep it. In the Monday night meeting, someone said they were looking for buildings in Chester, but not his building in particular. No one has sought his building out. He knew what it was coded, and since he's found out that it's not commercial, he's continued doing just like what he was doing. Someone has put a camper there. They have stuff on the outside. I also sent Mr. Guy a lengthy thing of restrictions if it happens to pass, which we hope it don't. But somehow, it got misconstrued, and we didn't get it. But, you know, we just, we don't want it there. And for one reason is, is he's being very disrespectful to the community as it is now. We have two campers now, not one. Two campers, four cars. He got a big trash dump thing out there full of stuff that's already being out there. So if he makes this commercial, or if it becomes commercial, limit it commercial, who knows what we'll have over there? And we just don't want it over there. And not any disrespect to him, but he knew that it was residential. He did nothing to make it commercial. So why can't he sell it as it is? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we already removed item 5A from the agenda, so next up will be the Administrator's Report. Mr. Wester.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think tonight, I'm just gonna forego the Administrator's Report. I sent out a written Administrator's Report at the end of last week that contained quite a bit of information for council. So with the essence of time, I don't have anything further since that written Administrator's Report to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so under Old Business, Item A, Update Regarding the Chester County Tourism Video. That's gonna be Director Brett Studemire.
Good evening, council. Just wanted to make a quick report. We engaged the community as we filmed the four days on our tourism video.
Hang on one second. Mr. Studemire? Mr. Schokey, our monitors aren't working. I don't want, I don't want your thunder to be messed up with our monitors not working.
Gotcha.
There it is, something up.
Okay.
We good?
We're good. Thank you, sir.
And I just wanted to give you guys the most up-to-date information, so you can share it with your constituents. On February 1st, that's a Thursday, at the Gateway, we're gonna have the first annual Chester County Tourism Fair. It's gonna be 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Gateway Center. We're gonna show the long version of our video on every hour. We're gonna invite all the tourism vendors from our county to exhibit. We'll have food trucks and more there, and there's gonna be no cost for the guest or the vendors. Really, really excited about this event at the Gateway, so everyone can come and see it. We also have a short video that we're gonna release digitally on that day, and we have advertising dollars across Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, to really get the word out, not only in our county, but in the state and all the surrounding states. And then that's also the day that our website, our tourism website, will be completed and launched. And of course, all these businesses will be featured on that, that website with an interactive map. So February 1st is a big day in tourism for our county. Now, moving forward, I have four. These are rough cut from our tourism footage. These are not the final product by any means. These are just rough videos to give you an idea of what we got over the four days. So let me start with that. Here's the last one. We'll save the best for last, the most exciting one here. We had our county administrator. He was, he was in the mountain bike portion.
That's the way to suck up to you both.
You guys want me to go back? There you go. You know, just scenes like this with these young people enjoying, you know, the Chester State Park. I'm not gonna show you guys this video, but it's kind of emotional when I remember this moment, but Mr. Billy Powell has a very significant part, and I just wanted to put that up as a reminder, and I'm saving that part for the release. But very, very important part of the video of our unity message. And then this was the start of the video. Mr. Earl was, was in there and was great. So just to give you guys a run back, that February 1st, the Tourism Fair at the Gateway, it's all happening, and I just wanted to let you guys know so you can let the constituents know. You guys have any questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we have the third reading, Item 7B, the third reading of CCMA 23-11. Tatiana Latill Kelly requests tax map number 0690402051000, located at 522 Gloria Drive off Peaking Road, to be rezoned from multifamily residential district RG1 to general residential district RG2. Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve. It's good. If we have a, if we have a question for you, we'll ask it, but we're, we're good. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to uphold the planning commission.
A second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn and a second by Councilwoman Mosley. Is there a discussion? All right. Hearing no discussion, those in favor of approving this, the third reading, please raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Item 7C is the third reading of CCMA 23-13. Jeff Sanders requests tax map number 115-00-00-102-000, located at 2707 Lancaster Highway, Chester, South Carolina, 29706, to be rezoned from restricted industrial district ID1 to limited industrial district ID2. The Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve.
I'll make a motion to accept the Planning Commission for CCMA 23-13.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation, recommendation to approve by Mr. Agi and a second by Ms. Mosley. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Next up is the second reading of CCMA 23-14. Robert Reed and Craig Schaffner request tax map number 124-00-00-008-000, located at 3353 Edgeland Road, Richburg, South Carolina, 29729, to be rezoned from rural District, R2 to general commercial district GC. Planning Commission voted six to zero to deny.
I'll make a motion, we uphold the planning commissions to deny and for discussion.
A second for discussion.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Agi to deny with a second by Ms. Mosley. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Next up is the second reading of CCMA 23-14. Robert Reed and Craig Schaffner request tax map number 124-00-00-008-000, located at 3353 Edgeland Road, Richburg, South Carolina, 29729, to be rezoned from rural District, R2 to general commercial district GC. Planning Commission voted six to zero to deny.
I'll make a motion, we uphold the planning commissions to deny and for discussion.
A second for discussion.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Agi to deny with a second by Ms. Mosley. Any discussion?
Last, last meeting, this is a piece of property that I reclusive myself because I've known Mr. Blanks since we were in the first grade together. I've known Mr. Alts' mother-in-law since we were in the first grade together. And this is a really tough place to, to be in. But I've gone out there to Richburg, and if y'all ridden down 901, like the Edgeland Road, it's, it's immense. And Mr. Blanks and Ms. Blanks have been living in that house for 50-something years. And Mr. Reed has got a significant amount of property where he has his business, and there's no logical reason that he can't have that and have all of that in one place. The Planning Commission, I thought Mr. Rains and those did a really good job. I was here that night. I, I just don't see the benefit of creating a little 10-acre commercial piece of property right here next to these people that have been there all their lives. We just go back a long way on both sides of this. And the Reed family, I've known those for a long time too, but I just don't think we need to do that. I think Mr. Alt spoke well, and if he wants to reiterate it again, that'll be fine, but he did not realize they were not, that it came before the board last, came before the county council last year. Mr. Rains made it real clear that it would come before county council, but they took the zoning sign down the day after. So for the sake of argument, they didn't know that. But I just don't see the need for changing the zoning and going against the Planning Commission. I think they did a really good job of asking a whole lot of questions, and I'm not in favor of it.
I have a question for Mr. Levis, if he wouldn't mind coming up. We heard last meeting that 10 acres was the cutoff point for spot zoning. You said that if it was less...
Two acres. Usually, what, and Joni, we talked about it at the last meeting, as you said, Councilman, good afternoon. Most cases, or if you try to rezone anything less than two acres, it's considered spot zoning by all the court cases.
So if this was a two-acre tract?
If it was less than two acres.
It'd be spot zoning.
It could fall into classification as a court case for spot zoning.
Thank you.
So I, I had a problem with this in the beginning when we, when we, when it came up in our last meeting, because I think I made the comment too that I didn't feel comfortable about voting for this if the Planning Commission voted six to zero, but then I was also told that he owned a piece of property right beside it. And I thought we put in a reverter clause that if he ever sold this, it would revert right back. Is that still standing incorrect?
That, that was the motion that was made.
So the reverter clause is in there. If he sells it, it goes back?
It would, Mr. Guy, and I think that, that if council decides to perhaps vote to approve this, we might wanna think about how logistically that would work, us trying to legislate the sale of a property or even to track the sale of a property. It could be instead of, if the property is sold, if the property changes its use. That, that we can...
So it's, it's really not cut and dry in the sense that if, if he does sell it, it's really not that easy of a thing to revert it back, is what you're saying?
I'm not sure how we would know. I mean, you know, we would have a deed transfer, but we don't monitor those on a daily basis.
Okay, well, in that case, I'm gonna... Was your motion seconded to deny?
Yes.
Yes. My motion was to uphold the planning commission's six-o vote to deny that.
And I just had a quick, you know, thinking about a few, quite a few things that we've had come before us with the requirements and the reverter, which I'm, I'm all for that, but it's kinda like, logistically, how does that work? Because I don't wanna monitor somebody's property. That's not government's business to do. But the, the stipulations with general commercial in that property, we haven't discussed any of that. Like, is there anything that we would not allow for that property? And I don't, you know, kinda, that's kind of a gray area for me too, to say what someone should and shouldn't be able to do with their property. So I think there's a little bit more consideration on my part that I would like to make, you know, for this, for this to go further, maybe clear understanding for myself and the people with this property.
At this time, despite the fact that it's not, it's more than two acres, and listening to the comments from the public, Mr. Alt, I voted, I think I voted four at last time, but with them having property behind the tract that they're talking about, they're, they're already currently at, I don't think I can support this. I'm gonna vote to uphold the planning commission.
All right, is there any more discussion? If not, I will call for the vote. Those in favor of denying this second reading, please raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
We have four, and those opposed, myself. So that's gonna be, the motion to deny passes four to one. Yeah, four to one. All righty. Next up is Item 7E, the second reading of CCMA 23-15. Rodney L. Coldwell requests tax map number 0690100035000, located at 619 Pine Ridge Road, Chester, South Carolina, 29706, to be rezoned from multifamily residential district RG1 to limited commercial district LC. Planning Commission voted four to two to approve.
I'll make a motion that we deny the rezoning of CCMA 23-15 with discussion.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Guy and a second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to bring Ms. McClinton back up to ask her a few questions, if it's okay with your chair.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Clinton, so you, I heard you say earlier that there was some more campers on the property?
Yep.
As of today?
Yep. I got a picture.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't ride by there, but I do have a problem with that if there are some more campers up there.
Yes, a yellow camper and another older car that they put on there, and it came today.
Okay, so a couple of things, you know, we did have, thank you for shouting out the town hall meeting, and we will have a follow-up on, on that on next Monday. I'd like for you to be there as well. We can discuss this as well, and we can discuss the information that you and I somehow or another didn't get.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
We can discuss that information. But one thing, I, I think you asked the question is, if, can he sell it the way it is? Yes, he can sell it the way it is, but, you know, just like we discussed in the town hall meeting, if it, if it does not sell the way it is...
Right.
We have to think about, we all, including me, because I live on that road too, have to think about how it's gonna look if it does not sell. So that's just something. And that was one of the reasons why our Economic Development Director was telling us that we possibly had someone who may have been interested in it that could actually make the property look, look better.
Right.
But yes, to answer your question, you're exactly right.
It can be so.
He can sell it the way it is. He can try to sell it the way it is.
Okay, and we have, she couldn't make it. I think she's ill tonight. She had two homes, I don't know if it was in the city or the county, and it wasn't kept up, and they made her tear it down. So if he doesn't keep this property up, can he, it not be, he can be made to tear it down? Because he's not keeping it up at all, and he's just bringing more and more stuff there. And the other night, my husband heard him out there bamming again. So it's like, it's a noise on it, on it too. He's just not keeping it up. And I, I don't even know if it's the man that's sell, trying to sell it, or the guy that's supposedly going to buy it, but, you know, he's letting them park the stuff there. So it's, you know, six in one and half a dozen in the other, they're still both there. So that's why we said, can he sell it as it is? Or if he can't keep it up, can it be tore down? Because this is another thing that I have in three minutes to say. All these years until the 18th, 2018, when it was, you said that they couldn't do it anymore? Well, he's been trafficking in and out of there. So us as neighbors, like I say, not unintelligent, but not knowing the rules, he was just in and out constantly. And if he was real concerned, where is he tonight? He hasn't been at either one of the meetings.
I, I, I get it.
I know, I'm not supposed to talk, I'm sorry.
We'll, no, we'll discuss this. I'd like for you to come to our town meeting again on, on next Monday.
Tuesday.
On next Tuesday night.
It's next Tuesday? Okay, I'll be there.
And, and we'll discuss this on next Tuesday night. But at this council meeting, I also wanted to say too, that, that question was asked, would, would that be for the whole area or just for that?
Right.
That would just be just for that property.
Okay.
It will not be for the whole area.
For the old, old area.
No, ma'am, there, I, I know that tract of land that's beside you, and it actually runs behind all of y'all's houses too.
Right, exactly.
No, that's, that, that wouldn't include that piece of property.
Okay, all right. Well, it's next Tuesday at 6:00.
6:00.
Same place. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Is there more discussable, discussion by council?
Just to kinda reiterate, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, I've been looking at the, the uses for both zoning, and I just maybe need a clearer picture, get with Michael a little bit clearer about what, what a better way to go about this in my own mind. Because I get exactly what you're saying, I get exactly about the property, so I just kinda need maybe just a, a little bit more clarification. So Mike, you're on guard for me. I'll be catching up with you again. All right.
Anything else? All right, so the motion is to deny this second reading of CCMA 23-15. Those in favor, please raise your right hand to say aye.
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 All right, so we have four, four in favor, and I'm opposed. So the motion, motion carries. Okay, so Agenda Item 7F is the second reading of CCTA 23-02. It's RS1, Chester County Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment, Single Family Residential District Uses, Chapter 4, 4-109, RS1, Special Exception. The recommendation to remove text, RS1, Special Exception, Item 2, Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve.
Make a motion to uphold the planning commission.
Second.
Mr. Agi, so we have a motion by Mr. Vaughn and a second by Mr. Agi to uphold the recommendation to approve. Is there a discussion?
Could we, I know he gets tired of being put on the spot, but can we have Mr. Levis to come up and clarify this for the, for the citizens for us, please, so they will understand what's happening?
So, good evening again, council. So basically, it's a recommendation from, to the administrator, to me, to remove RS1 Cluster Development as being a special exception under RS1 to be approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we won't have any zoning that allows cluster development, it'll all be planned development from moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Any more comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. Those in favor of this second reading of CCTA 23-15... reading of C C T A twenty-three dash oh two, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. The motion carries five to zero. Item seven G is the second reading of C C T A twenty-three dash zero, zero three. It is P D, Chester County Zoning Ordinance Text Amendments, Plan Development, District Regulations, Chapter four, dash one thirty. Recommendation to add new text, P D, Plan Development, District Regulations. The Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve. And what that does is, is the number of units shall not exceed the guaranteed allotment for service of water and wastewater. Should the water and wastewater guarantee expire before the development, construction begins, the zoning shall revert to the previous zoning. Is there a motion on this?
I make a motion, yeah. C C T A twenty-three dash oh three, that we uphold the planning commission's recommendation.
A second.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Agee and a second by Ms. Mosely to uphold the recommendation. Is there a discussion?
Can I ask Mr. Levis, sir, a question?
Yes, sir.
Copy to me.
I didn't make you do all that.
Just, just a quick question. I understand what this is, but there is a new zoning sign at Stanton that says there will be a meeting of the planning commission tomorrow night. Is that, what is that about? Is that?
That is the primary plat. The zoning's already been approved.
Well, that's.
So his next step is the sketch plan, which has already been approved. Now he's presenting the primary plat to the planning commission tomorrow night.
All right.
Is there any more discussion? If not, those in favor to approve this second reading of C C T A twenty-three dash oh three, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 All right. The motion carries five to zero. Under New Business, we have item eight A, the approval of bid project two 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 zero nine dash zero zero one two, Lewis Fire Station to lowest bidder Faulkner Development and Engineering in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. I'll ask Mr., our new project manager, Mr. Hayes, to speak.
Evening, Vice Council Chairman, council members. I stand before you wanting to approve or award the Lewis Fire Station to the lowest bidder, Faulkner Development and Engineering for eight hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Now, there was a local bidder, but their bid did not come within the two percent required to receive preference. Their bid was roughly about twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars more than Faulkner, so we went with Faulkner.
Out of curiosity, Mr. Hayes, it's my understanding, sitting here several years ago, that they had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build that station. And if you, the last time I went to elementary school, eight hundred's a lot more than eight, seven fifty. So where's the extra money coming from?
Well, I talked with the county administrator and the county treasurer, and there was a surplus account where we will pull money to pay for the remaining balance of the project.
Mr. Agee, council, council approved an ordinance in, I believe it was twenty twenty-two, Ms. Winters. Council approved, they knew that this bid, this bid was approximately five years ago, so, well, I say the bid, the allotment for this, and knew it was gonna be that seven hundred thousand was not enough. It's actually started much lower than that. And so council, previous council, had allocated seven hundred thousand of C P S T C, or C P S T funds, and then council approved to allocate the remainder needed out of the gateway funding. And so there, I can tell you to the dollar what's being funded.
Previous council obligated this council.
Well, they approved to use those funds for the project, not knowing an exact cost on that project at that time.
Mr. Williams sat right in here the night that was done and said he could build this fire station for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I sat right there and heard him. And Mr. Lutes, Mr. Loughlin, Ms. Jennings, the gentleman from Founders, and a pastor, I can't remember his name, gave him seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make sure he had plenty of money to do that. So now, we've gone from seven hundred and fifty thousand to eight hundred thousand. Mr. Williams, he's back there, had told the, the one percent sales tax committee, he could do it for four hundred and fifty thousand. So I'm absolutely confused, because today's post inquiry pretty much says we are not in compliance with the one percent right here. There's twenty-two counties in this state that do one percent sales tax, and all but one, all but one failed to report their spending as required by state law. So now we're sitting here, and you want me to vote on something that we're not in compliance with, and that's the one cent sales tax.
That's, that's not true, Mr. Agee. I, I know what the article states, but the D O R, that, that, that has been there for quite some time. The D O R has not required that reporting. And so until recently, the D O R decided to require that and, and has communicated with each county. Now, somebody wrote an article, but remember, that article was written by, by media personnel. So the D O R has contacted every county and asked them to now, as first quarter, start reporting. We, we do have a report that is accurately depicts where every dollar of our ones, in fact, our report will meet D O R's. We won't have to do anything else other than print it out and give it to them. So we are in compliance. D O R has not asked for that, and it was a, Ms. Winters, it was a fine print item that D O R just realized was in the legislation itself, thus the reason for this now being done.
It also says in here, under the new law, counties would be required to tell the state every three months how much money they spend.
That's correct.
It also says in here that the state created the one cent sales tax group to have a board appointed by this county, by this council. They would make the decision on what the projects were. They would also make the decisions on the list. Sit right in here and listen to that. And this is in here. And this is, the list of one cent sales tax projects has not gone by what the one cent sales tax commission voted.
The, the legislation actually allows for counties to co-mingle funds, so I can, a county can adopt a one cent sales tax, and you say they allot seven hundred thousand dollars for a project. Legislation also allows for counties to take funds, just as we're doing from gateway funds, and to actually complete those projects.
Oh, I'm not opposed to the fire station. What I'm opposed to is, we said one thing, it would go do something else. We just did it a minute ago. So I'm not in favor of, of anything outside of this.
I'm gonna respectfully ask you, Mr. Agee, that this council, nor myself, nor Mr. Hayes, or most people in this room, had a part in deciding how much was gonna be allocated. And, and again, nor did we have a part in, you know, how long the project took. Our goal was to get it finished. The local bidders, the ones who originally could do it for the price that you're talking about, or we're one of the bidders in this, this, Mr. Williams is back there, and he was with us through every step of this process. And I don't think anyone can build a metal building for prices we could six years ago. And so these are the prices that we have now.
So, so, Mr. Hayes, let me ask you this right here. What does this building break down to be in square footage, and how much per square footage is this building?
Well, the building is fifty by sixty, so that's, what, thirty thousand square feet? And I think, because I asked myself that question, and that kind of came out to average about two hundred ninety-one dollars per square feet.
Do you happen to know how that compares to local numbers or local averages, or can you give us that information?
Um, I think in South Carolina, that's around the high range. I think it's like from, maybe like three something, well, something like from two thirteen to about three.
Two thirteen to three?
Yeah. That's, that's what I'm, 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 uh.
And you said we were, how much, two ninety-one?
Yes, based off it being fifty by sixty.
So we're on the high side of what the averages are?
Yes.
But this was actually the lowest bidder?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to get into an argument with this, but I think Mr. Hester's wrong. And I'll, I'll just have to get my lawyer to find out and tell me whether I'm right or, or he's right. And that's fine. That's how this life is played. But what is absolutely inexcusable is to not stay within the budget and to think that we just got money to throw away. If he could build this building several years ago for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's three hundred some thousand dollars more, almost four hundred thousand dollars. And I don't understand how we can be that much off. He is, he was a licensed contractor in the state of South Carolina, and he's built a many a building. And if he says he could do that, then we pull out and we don't do that. We built a fire station in North Chester, which needed, not arguing that point, but it cost over a million dollars.
Was this person a part of the bidding process that came in to, to where Mr. Hayes is getting this information to present to us? Was that person involved in this?
I don't know.
Who was this person? Does, can we say who this person was, who this bidder?
Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams.
Oh, so this.
Mr. Williams, would you mind coming up? I think the question Mr. Agee is referring to, that there was comments, this building several years back, multiple years back, it could be built much cheaper than what we're having it built now. Would you like to comment on that?
What he's referring to is, is, in the beginning, when we started putting these numbers together for the committee, my first bid was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to build this building, and then we had to add the well septic tank and the rating to it, which was, at that time, was gonna be about sixty thousand more dollars. Now, since then, everything, as everybody knows, COVID created a mess, nightmare for everybody. Even during that, we still had some bids that came in at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The grading and well septic tanks still had to be added to that. Since that time, I don't know where this thing's gone. All I can tell you is Alliance is, after some discussion, you were in on those discussions, Harold's been in on those discussions, they agreed to give us what we asked for. They had done some things different, but they went back to the original specs that I had drawn. Why this thing's as high as it is, I can give you reasons how it can be done cheaper, but that's not to be done here tonight, I don't think. The county's got a process they have to go through. It's not the same process that the private sector goes through to build a building, and it makes it cost more money. Those are the only reasons I can give you. I'd be glad to answer any questions, anybody's got. I've built a lot of things in my lifetime. I mean, a lot of things.
Um, I got one more, just clarification. How many square foot you said that building was, Mr.?
Three thousand square feet.
Three thousand?
Three thousand.
I have a comment to make. There's another capital projects, project in Great Falls, the, what we intended to be the welcome center in the old company store building, which we got an estimate of two point six million dollars to do the entire building. And that thing, now, they're telling us that we can only do the first floor with that two point six million dollars. So it's been huge increases since COVID, as far as the cost of doing work on these projects. And we, seems like this project that I'm speaking of is just, sometimes I wonder why it's taken so long. And I've had discussions with Alliance as to why it's taking so long. And I spoke with Mr.
Hayes.
Hayes, tonight. And, but the bottom line is, we know these projects are costing a lot more than some of the numbers. And I think in the two thousand fourteen estimates, we had the same problem, did we not? People put up project costs that were way lower than what they actually cost, and it caused all kind of problems doing it again. We thought, in twenty, we thought we were doing a better job.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just, what everybody says is right. I mean, the original money, you know, that was put down was a lower amount. But for, for the point we're in from, from a standpoint right now, we walked into, to where these projects are. The county's already paid these engineering firms a large portion of this money. The contracts were already done. The cost opinions, the cost opinion I'm sitting looking at was from September of twenty twenty-two. And so that was initial cost opinion. It is more now. It's, it's approximately a hundred and some odd thousand dollars more than that now. We don't know what the prices are doing. Granted, the, the policies that we have in place from a procurement standpoint, we've worked to change those to make them more favorable for us when doing these projects. Mr. Hayes and I have been working on a plan on smaller projects. We have a lot more ability now for Mr. Hayes. That's why we hired him, was to do a lot of this work for us and to shave some of the costs, and for us to almost be subcontractors in, in, to an extent. But for some of these projects that are going, if we turn back right now, the money, the money's allocated, there's seven hundred thousand out of the capital project sales tax. Council had approved for us to use other funds. Those other funds have to be used on those list of projects, and there, there, those funds are there for them. And so for us to pull out now, we're gonna cost the county and the taxpayers money that's already been invested into this project that we're still gonna have to go back and re-engineer. And so we're gonna, we're gonna lose money if we walk away at this point.
And time.
I, I, I got, I got a question. Mr. Hayes, this probably happened before he got here. You could probably answer. How much did we pay for the fire station in Lando? Is that, not the one we just finished?
The one in North Chester.
North Chester. How much did we pay?
It was right at a million dollars.
How many square feet was that?
I, I.
It's about the same size.
It's about the same size.
So.
But, but, and, and it's not Alliance that did this. It was another engineering firm that ended up, county ended up firing, if I, I think that's the right term.
There was two.
And, and they did not do, spec the building the way it was spec to the commission. They changed the structure and the construction of the building. So the building we're building and the building they built at North Chester is built out of two different products. And ours is not gonna be cheaper. Not, we're not cheapening up the building by using the materials we're using, but it's gonna be a cost difference. It's just a standard metal building. They had, they had to upgrade it a little bit because it was a fire station. And fire stations are used for public access during disaster periods, like, like Hurricane in eighty, eighty-nine.
So, so what I'm getting at is, if, if we paid almost a million dollars for that one, it's around the same size, we're actually paying a little cheaper for this one?
Yes, sir.
On paper, that's what it, that's what it looks like to me. I understand where Mr. Agee is coming from, want to clarify if we're, if we're spending the money right, but I'm just looking at apples to apples, oranges to oranges, if North Chester's.
It's not apples to apples.
Well, I'm, the way I'm looking at it, layman's terms.
Yes.
Um, that's a better word.
Well, y'all look at it, the fire station's a fire station.
Yeah.
Ours is being constructed out of steel, theirs is constructed out of.
Brick veneer, wasn't it? It was brick veneer, wasn't it?
It was masonary.
It was masonary, yes.
Yeah, brick. So, so what I'm getting at is, it, it, it's around the same square footage and about a hun, yours is about a hundred thousand dollars cheaper.
Yes.
There were some, there were some site considerations in North Chester. The site was not real friendly to us.
It was terrible.
But, I mean, was that price that, that much more astronomical to make it a million dollars?
It cost a lot more to get that site worked up. The property was given to, to the fire department for that, and it was, it was hard to work on.
The different, here's the difference, Mr. Guy. The, the fire station, the building in Fort Long is, is a fire station. There's gonna be officers in it. It got two million dollar grant from Randy Ligon. This town of Fort Long built it. So whatever that is, the square footage of it is, is what, six thousand? So whatever that is, the square footage of it is, is what, 6,000, something, something like that?
I'm not sure.
But whatever it is, it's got things in it. His station is going to have a bathroom. And some warm light bulbs. It's, it's, it's a metal building, going to have heat, a bathroom and a place to wash your hands, right? Yes, sir.
So what happens if we put this back out for, you said it, it would hurt us if we put it back out for bid, trying to get three, another, if this was the lowest one that Mr. Hayes got this time around, you think we can get, we get one lower or find another contractor?
Well, here's the thing, if you don't change your scope and you just pull the bid and put it back out for bid, you're not going to have, construction companies aren't going to bid on it. What we're going through right now, if the only basis is, is that the price isn't low enough for us and we aren't changing the scope, I'm not so sure we'll get anybody to bid on it. Mr. Williams, would you agree?
I would say you may be right. The problem with, with, and, and, and I'm, what I'm going to tell you is I'm not in agreement with, but it's just a fact of life. If you go back and rebid this thing and you rebid it under the county specs, you're going to have to go hire another engineering firm, another architect firm.
That's right.
If you were in a private sector, we would not have to do this. We, we'd still have to have engineer seals and we'd have to still have architect seals, but they would be the responsibility of the contractor. You're making the county be responsible for the engineering fees and architects fees and it's costing you more money.
And, and Mr. Williams is 100% right there and that's one of the things that Mr. Hayes is working on, is a design-build process and a process where our procurement policy allows and matches that as well, which it does, but there are certain things we have to put into place. And so, again, these, these that we have contracts for and that we're already into, it's hard to, it's hard to pull out.
I, I just...
Well, at, at the end of the day, the main station at Richburg cost $40,000 for an architect. He drew the same plans, all of those, and he, he built a building for $40,000. That's what it cost. The fire station, it Knox's Station, similar to what he's wanting to bid, he charged us $10,000. That's a significant savings doing what Mr. Williams was able to do, go find somebody to work cheaper instead of paying an architectural firm, because both of those buildings in Richburg's district are metal buildings. They come pre-engineered. You don't have to go through all of that stuff that we are making go, and, and that's what you just said, right? We're making, the county is making people spend money for architects and engineering firms when you can buy a metal building already pre-engineered and build a thing. My only point, I'm going to vote for the fire station. Don't, trust me, I'm not going to not vote for a fire station, but here again, we got to think about saving the taxpayers some money.
I, I, I have to, I have to say, these, uh, it's no, no, nothing with Mr. Hayes. He, he did his job. He got the three, three bids, but $900,000 for a metal building, it seems like it's not much in it from what y'all telling me, but...
No.
Uh, okay, so I'm, I'm going to put this into perspective. My church, we just built a commercial building. We're building a commercial building and it's triple its size with offices and classrooms. And it was right at the same price. And it's brick, and it's brick for dear. And it's a commercial building, so...
But the difference is, is you're not dealing with the bureaucracy of the county. And I'm not saying that is a mean thing, which, when, and, and I found this out after I put all this together and the, the money was awarded for us to build this fire station. And I came into this building and it was told to me point blank at that time, you have nothing else to do with this until we call you. Because I had the contractors lined up. I could have got three bids for every job on that site. And I had the contractors lined up to do it. And that stopped. We were number one on this list to have, in the 1-cent money. Now, it's five years later and we're still trying to get it started.
How, how much of the, of the quote unquote county's bureaucracy money is tied up in this 874, you think?
Uh, I can tell you. Well, I can give you, I can give you the portion of Alliance. One, one of the other companies also worked on this one, correct, Mr. Williams?
Uh, not...
Before the county fired him?
Yes, before, before, I don't know if they ever did any work, but they were...
I, I couldn't tell you previously. There was, uh, there was actually two companies that worked on some of these fire stations that, um, yeah, that was one of them. And, um, so any monies with there, but currently there's just, I'm, I'm going to give you a rough number, but over $100,000 is tied up in this one with a balance due, um, of roughly another 59.
To the engineering firm.
Correct.
I guess what I'm getting at, Lewis Fire Station is in my district, so I kind of, I got, I'm kind of biased because I kind of want the best for them. But if, if you're not getting much for this money, I, I feel like we should get a little bit more than if it's very simple building for this. I mean, I, 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 I just don't know.
This, this is really simple construction. It really is. And I, I, I never have understood the complexity that got involved in getting this building to the point it is today. But I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Hester. If you stop this project, it probably will take, take it to another level that you, you're not expecting.
And, and let me just say that if this is, if this is council's stance with regard to these projects that are already going and you want us to, let's take aside this one right this minute, but you know we have other major projects going. Not a single one of those projects, the ma- major projects are within the budget that was created four, five, however many years ago. And if it's council's, if this is council's wish and desire and we pull out of those and that's where you want us to go with them, understand those projects will stop until we get a plan, till we have, till we have a process and any monies in those projects would also be lost. And there's, Rodman Park is one that I'm, we have over $400,000 into at this point. It will not come in on budget.
Mr. Hester, he, he just said, he just said, he was the number one on the list five years ago. Not your fault, not your fault. But we sit right here in this room and projects were done out of order, out of that 1-cent sales tax commission's order. They did this, they did that, they fixed this, they fixed that, whatever. So now you get down to the number one project. And it, it, this is not logical. I just don't understand. And Mr. Levister got up and he's pretty smart. He usually keeps, keeps things in line. But for the sake of argument, if, if a, if, if this is true, then there was a, a list, one, two, three, four, five. And after five, I didn't care because five was putting the drains in the, in the, uh, parking lot at the substation and, and closing the little shed on the fire station or Knox's Station. That was less than $100,000. It just got done five years later. There, there's been no management of this process, in my opinion. And that's what's driving this. And he's standing here, he's going to give me hell in the morning, but that's okay. We, we've got to fix this project.
Mr. Mr. Wilson, can I just follow up with one thing? And Mr. Agee, you're right. So you, you have to go one, two, three, four, five. If you take, if you use your capital project sales tax money as it's allocated, however, many counties do a bond and take that money in a lump sum and then that capital project allotment pays that bond. When you do the bond, you don't have to go in order. What you have to do is whatever you allotted to that project, you have to spend that much on that project. And so for us as a county, we don't, and I'm not saying it's right, because you're right. If, if you voted on it and you wanted it one through five, we should go one through five. But that, I'm just giving you the explanation as to why that wasn't done.
That was a good thing, in my opinion, because if, if you had a project that was way down on the list, it was pretty disappointing and the, the company store was one of those. It was, I think it was like number 17. And it put the project way behind, uh, the timing of the development that we expect in Great Falls. It was a major blow for us. And so when they, uh, got the ability to get that lump sum, that was a great thing for, in my opinion.
And, and Mr. Agee, we are, we're, we're doing our best right now to, uh, meet, we meet bi-weekly, um, on all the capital project sales tax. And our goal is to make sure, we've even put in some little tighter parameters on the money that we've allocated to, uh, the cities and some of the other areas, that they're spending time limits to ensure that no one falls behind, that these projects get completed, that we have the contingency to cover projects to go over. Because our, our goal is for the taxpayers to see every project completed on that list and we want to keep those within budget. We've taken many steps to actually bring some of those, and, and I'll give you a quick example to not belabor this, but there was a project that we had nothing to do with. Alliance was in on this one as well, but there was some engineering fees, there was some other work that could be done. We sat around a table and as we reviewed these projects, we said, hold on, we can do this ourself now that we've got Mr. Hayes, or we can do two things ourself and we can go do the demolition work. And we brought that project $20,000 under budget that was 30,000 over. So we're really taking an effort to do that and that's, I think that's why we're passionate. Look, I promise you when we bring something to you, it may be a little bit of an ugly, you know?
I, I remember you going to the landfill and getting two by fours and building your firing range. So I do remember how you do business.
That's right. That's right. So we, we're going to do our best and it may be ugly at times, but I promise you, we've done all we can to bring it in as close to, um, what you guys expect from us.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the votes. So the motion is to approve this bid project to Faulkner Development and Engineering in the amount of 874,530. Uh, those in favor, please raise your hand, right hand and say aye.
Aye.
We don't have a motion yet? So sorry. All right. Let's back up. So, uh, that is, we're on item 8A and so we need a motion.
I move, we approve the lowest bid on this project.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Vaughn and second by Ms. Mosley. Um, is there any, any further discussion?
Yeah, one more thing. What, what's the plans for the old building? Are we tearing them down or building it right beside?
The rest of the substation to our old building.
So this is...
This is going to be a second station. But called at ISO insurance rates, you have to keep your people within a five mile radius of the fire station for them to get the lower insurance rate. The people outside, over on the Fishing Creek side, right now are paying a class 10 rate. The people at the Lewis Fire Station on Saluda Road, if they're within five miles of that station, they're paying a class four rate. That is hundreds of a dollars difference in their insurance.
And this one's going to be on which road?
It's going to be on South Fork Road just before you get to Fishing Creek Road. It'll take us all the way to county line.
I know, yeah.
Cover everybody.
Okay, I know exactly what you mean. Yeah.
Any more discussion? All right. No more discussion. I'll call for the vote this time. So, um, again, the votes to approve the lowest bidder in the amount of 874,530. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries five to zero. Uh, item 8B is the approval of the 2024 council and CTC meeting dates.
I make a mo- uh, motion that we approve the 2024 council and CTC meeting dates with, uh, those dates, um, mentioned, one of, one of those dates?
You got it.
Yeah, I wanted it, I wanted somebody to tell me.
For all of them?
When's the first one, actually?
January 2nd.
January 2nd. That's what I need to know.
Sorry.
All right. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Thank, thank...
Thank you.
Counsel, mostly. Beat you, Mike. Um, all right. So we have a motion to approve in a second. Um, any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 All right. Motion carries. Next up is executive session, uh, 9A. It's a personnel matter regarding the county administrator.
I move we go to executive session.
Second.
All right. I have a motion in a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.